That's kind of why I do a check.
David.
Unmute yourself, Dave.
I'm trying.
There we go.
There you are. Good job.
It just took my wife's touch.
That's okay. So you're ready, Dave?
Yep.
Okay, Kim, you're all still ready? Jennifer, you're all ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna call the meeting, Slutman's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine, for May 6, 2020. First item is loop the flag. Apology to agents.
To the flag. United States of America.
Which stands one nation under God.
Thank you, everyone.
Good work on that.
Okay, this is our third Zoom meeting, I believe, that we've had, so it seemed to be working out fairly well. Okay, next is Town Administrator Weekly Update. Jen, what was yours?
Thank you. All right, so hopefully you guys can hear me a little better tonight. We've changed locations, so hopefully it's a little more clear. The first thing I wanted to talk to you about was I've gotten two calls regarding mass gathering permits. So I just wanted to kind of talk to you about, I think, the direction that, you know, the advice that we're giving them, or to make sure that it's the board's advice. So mass gathering permits are required for anybody, any gathering over 200 people. So based on the governor's order, is it safe to assume that we're not entertaining mass gathering permits at this time?
I would say, yes, we are not.
David, Kim?
No, we can't.
Can't have one.
So the, one of the calls was from the, I think Ed, Ed, you mentioned them a week or so ago, the VW, the Volkswagen Club.
Yep.
They're not sure what was going on. At the time that I had spoken to him, he wasn't aware that the Acton Fair had canceled. So unfortunately, that's probably headed in the same direction, but he did, did ask me to ask, so I told him that I would. So until it's lifted, we're not going to be accepting those, correct?
Right, because actually, what does the governor's order say? It doesn't even get to 50 until July?
June, June 1st, it gets to 50.
Yeah.
But he's, I mean, if he needs a mass gathering permit, that puts him at, you know, well over 200, 250.
Yep, yep, yeah, can't even do it.
And the 50 stays until right through August, so.
Right. The next thing that I wanted to ask you guys about was the, some stipends regarding cable. So as we're aware, during the shutdown of the, you know, four, six weeks that we're at, you guys authorized the town to pay one stipend each for the two, the two people that were regularly filming. Now that we are kind of getting back on track, we're having Zoom meetings. It is different, you know, it's somebody different that we're paying the stipend now, but what am I doing with the other two people? Are we, as far as, you know, as far as stipend, are we stopping to pay that now that? Or am I continuing? What is your pleasure?
Dave and Kim?
We're gonna be having other committees start getting up and running, right?
It'll be via Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
None will be live filmed.
Okay, and is there any way either one of them can learn how to do the Zoom? Or is it only one person that is, I mean, I know Dan's doing it for us, but I just, I didn't know to give them work, I guess.
I mean, it's certainly possible that we could, you know, we could show them, sorry.
I mean, does Dan have time to do, you know, all these meetings that are gonna be coming up, I guess?
And, well, I'll let David speak and then I'll answer that.
Go ahead, Dave.
I think right now, and Dan's doing a good job, if Dan can continue doing it, I think we probably just stick with this route if we can. Um, I, I, I myself believe that the two ladies there that are, are doing it now, I think we're, what are we, what are they scheduled, like, one a week right now?
One a week we're paying them, yes.
Yeah, and for right now, I, I'm just, I believe for the, you know, we, it's not their fault that they're not working. And we're having a hot enough time trying to find anybody to do it. I, I think it's fair to, you know, we're kind of furloughing them anyways, it's the way we're looking at it. I, I, I believe we should keep paying at least those two for, for the time being. And obviously, further on down the road here, we'll see how much longer we want to do that. Did you talk to Mr. Corey? Because Mr. Corey's still getting paid his, his full stipend.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I, whether or not we can, I don't know if we should be talking about this.
Yeah, let's not get too far. So Michelle, let's ask, let's ask Michelle, if, so, so I guess, let's go back first. So to, to Kim, first of all, it's possible that, you know, just because we've authorized the Zoom meetings, and we're gonna talk more about meetings. The planning board, for example, you know, they meet the first and third. They're not gonna be meeting until, you know, until possibly the third, because they're trying to get their agenda together and caught up on some things downstairs. And David, we'll, we'll talk, talk about that a little bit more. The rec, you know, if some of these orders don't get lifted, they're not gonna have a reason to meet. So I'm not sure how, you know, just because we've opened it up, I'm not sure that, you know, all of a sudden, we're gonna have all these meetings. But I guess the question to Michelle would be, is that, you know, let's just say that there are new employee does, you know, an average of two a week. Does that really, we want to get down to that, two, maybe, you know, three tops? What can that APAT budget support? Because that's what it comes down to.
The APAT budget can support paying five stipends a week for the rest of the fiscal year.
So if we...
It's in pretty good shape.
Does that include Dan, too?
Well, it's any five, David, any five.
Any five, any five.
So it would be, so it would be, if we are paying those two people, it would be three actual meetings that we could afford to pay Dan for.
And we have to remember, at some point, this is gonna let you, so we may have three for the first, you know, couple of weeks, and while we get through Warren and Finance. So five is, you know, five is a comfortable number, but there's gonna get to a point that, you know, this is gonna drop down to, you know, one a week, you know what I mean?
Right.
One or two a week, tops. So if, you know, if, if we can afford it, and that's the direction of the board, we'll continue to pay the two individuals, you know, use names, the $1.50 stipend that we've been giving them, and the new employee, you know, based on what that person is actually doing.
Yep. Kim, did you have a question?
Yeah, not a question, I just, you know, since we can afford it, since it's budgeted in, I would like to, you know, I do agree with David. You know, just do the one meeting a week for him, can we revisit this like at the first of June? You know, get through this month, and then we can revisit it and kind of see where we're at then.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Jen, with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What else do you have?
I'm, I'm just looking at my list, deciding where you want to go next. So I just wanted more of a kind of an FYI, I'm gonna be emailing you out how I believe Article 43 left with the incorporation of the agencies that we know that can help the residents at no charge. We put those few changes in, so I'm gonna be emailing that out to you, and Kim did ask that we get it on next week's agenda. So if you would look for that, we'll plan on trying to make some decisions and maybe at least get the application out there if we can get it approved in the next couple of weeks. Do you want me to send it to the road committee? Do you want to wait until you guys finalize, and then we'll send it to them for input? Or how would you let me handle it?
I'd wait till, yeah, I think I'd wait till we finalize it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it first, and then, you know, go through it, and then send it to them.
All right, so that'll be on next week. Just for clarification and the, the point of, you know, being a recorded meeting, I think it was Monday at the department head meeting, we talked about, or someone asked about article by article comparisons, and I just wanted to hear from the three of you that it was your understanding that we were doing this only for the town, correct? Not for the school?
My understanding is just the town, the schools, I mean, if the school wants it done, then, you know, that, that is...
Well, was it, was it you that asked? I mean, did you ask as selectman, or was it the member of the, the chair of the Warren and Finance? I don't recall who asked.
I think I asked.
Okay, okay, but then that's...
It would've been Kim as well, but, yeah.
I think we're...
Be a good thing to, to have a comparison.
And once... Sorry, David.
Dave?
Oh, I, I, I was just gonna reiterate on, I think what we were talking about last week was we were worried about people not knowing, you know, because we're, we're condensing it. So we thought we'd be able to do some comparisons and this and that, and send it out in the mail, right? Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, we didn't get into a whole lot of detail, I just remember it was a direction. So I wanted to make sure, I mean, Michelle and I talked about it briefly, and it's certainly something that she can do without a problem. We're not gonna start that until we get the warrant finalized first, and then we'll, we'll give you something to look at. I just wanted to be sure that the direction was just the town budget, not the school.
No, my intention was just, just the town budget.
Got it. Okay, so, next. So after your meeting last Wednesday, and you made the decision about the gym, I received, I counted today, 13 different emails slash private messages about the equipment. I replied to them as I understood it, that, I mean, I didn't hear, you know, closing the doors permanently, done, you know, finished. I guess I'm just, I'm looking for further direction, I mean, is it? What are you doing with the equipment?
We haven't decided to shut it down permanently, no. So, and anything...
I feel like we, I feel like we have enough time to make some decisions, to try to get this, you know, to get it on the warrant, I mean, I, I do. I, I really wish we could just put it out to people, you know, while we're doing our, our voting. I, I just, and let them decide, and then we can go from there. I mean, we try it per year with, we've got to get some numbers together, but I, I don't see why we can't get this done.
So the direction of the board last week was, I know, was that, and I'm not trying to bring up a source, I'm just trying to figure out how I answer these people about the equipment. Are you giving back to the fire department, is it to be determined? I mean, I thought it was kind of...
It ain't going anywhere, it ain't going anywhere right now until we figure out exactly what we're gonna do with it. And I think last time we talked about it, I mean, my suggestion was, and I understand where Kim's coming from, it'd be great to be able to do that, I just, you know, my concern was that I wanted to see some numbers, something we could put forward to the town, you know, especially when right now we're trying to keep a flat line budget, and, you know, keep the tax rate the same. But knowing that, you know, without, you know, rushing the process and making sure that, you know, we give every, and give the people at the gym a chance, a fair chance at this, you know, get some numbers, they gotta come up with some sort of plan. And I was thinking, you know, we're not gonna be able to open up, I don't think realistically, for at least three months anyways. You know, with all the restrictions and stuff and all that, I mean, I think we'd be out of our minds to do that. That would give us time to, you know, come, come up with some sort of plan, some sort of budget. And, and then at some point, you know, like I said before, I, I'm sure at some point, we're gonna end up having some sort of special town meeting for something to try to get back to normal here. And, you know, and go there. So I can't see the equipment, equipment staying right where it is, those are just locked for now. I mean, I thought that's what we agreed on.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about the equipment, and I agree, I just, I mean, I gotta bring it to you when I get that many, that many questions or comments about one thing, I mean, that's my job to bring it to you.
What about, I, I know that we had talked a little bit last week. I mean, I know we're gonna have to have a special town meeting. I just want to make sure that it is gonna be on there. And we had also talked a little bit about them having to, you know, prorate and send money back. Can we hold off until the special town meeting? I mean, that's a lot of work for, you know, the office girls to have to turn around and, and try to figure out everybody that has memberships. Is there any way to just kind of put it on hold unless somebody says, "I want my money back"? I just would hate to make you go through all that work.
Those gym, does gym money roll over, Michelle, and they've paid through the fiscal year?
Right, so if we're paying them back, we need to pay them back before the end of June.
Okay, so, we appreciate that, Kim, but when we, to keep clean books, and that's what I was afraid of.
I was supposed to, yeah, okay.
All right, so the answer, so I understand the answer clear, we didn't talk about equipment last time, so I'm just putting it out there, just so...
My, my, my belief on the equipment would be, even if we do shut the gym down, and the place is done, we, you know, no longer have it, the equipment would revert back to the fire department, would be my thoughts. That's where it started in the beginning, so.
That's if we shut it down, though, right?
Yeah.
Shut down, okay.
If we shut down, we're done, you know, that would be...
Okay.
We've lost you there, Kim. Yep.
I'm all set.
Still there? Hello?
Yeah, I'm here. Who, who are you asking?
Oh, I don't know who's supposed to be talking here.
You, go ahead.
I think, I think that was my connection, something happened, so I'm back, everything's okay.
I was just wondering, at any point in time, did the, did the fire department divert ownership over to any other entity other than themselves?
As far as the equipment?
Yeah.
No.
It's always been theirs, correct?
Well, it was, it, before they became a town department, yes, I mean, it's their equipment, they were given, they purchased it through a grant. And we...
I didn't know if it was something where they reverted it to the, the town hall or something like that, I didn't...
Well, I mean, they're a town department, so it becomes town equipment at this point, but the, you know, and, and we've had these conversations, you know, people have tried to find the grant and tried to find the fine print, instead of, you know, wanted to know if it said any fine print in there, but nobody has a copy of the grant at this point, we've gone back to the original, so. It's a town department, it's town equipment, and you guys can talk about that when it gets closer. Want to make a final decision?
Yep.
I think Rick might have wanted to say something.
Rick?
I gotta unmute him, go ahead. Hey. So I was just gonna go along with, with what Jennifer was saying, is if that equipment, if the gym closes and the equipment needs to be removed from the structure, the fire department would go through the equipment, take what we could use still, given the space and what we have, and what we think would be effective. And then the rest of the equipment would go out for sale or bid or anything, depending on where it falls, along with all of our regular ordinance stuff, just like everything else, any other piece of town equipment. Yep, it would go up for sale. The procedure, depending on its, its...
Value.
Value.
Yep. That sounds like a plan, okay. But for right now, we're not, we're not selling or getting rid of anything, so.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
So knowing that we're gonna be, I mean, we know we're gonna be Zooming through May. In June, depending on what happens, you know, depending on what the board decides, but in June, if we go up to 50 people, you may, you know, you have the option of going back to the town hall if you so choose. So we're only talking about a couple of weeks, but we do have the ability to run these Zoom meetings live through Facebook if the board wanted to. They are being uploaded currently to the APAT, and he's getting them on YouTube. Mike Corey is getting them on YouTube, but there is a, you know, there is the option of doing that.
Okay, there's no, there's no, we, when we have our regular meetings, we're live on cable, those aren't live on YouTube, are they?
They're not live anywhere else, no, just on cable.
Okay. Okay.
So, I mean, it's actually, it's an extra step, it's not, you know, it's not much, it's certainly not much work. Is it really necessary for a couple of weeks, I mean, it's an option, but they can, if they can get on Facebook, they could, you know, should be able to get on here as well, but it is something, you know, if you wanted to.
Okay.
So we, we can't, so the only way we could go live with this is through like Facebook or YouTube, you can't go live, right?
Right, YouTube's our videos, right?
I, I mean, it would be, I, after the last meeting, and some of the posts that were on Facebook, it would be nice if it was live, so people could actually see it.
Well, the only other piece, the other piece about that, remember our first meeting where, you know, we had our, our APAT directly, director had to mute out, you know, some of the verities, so that's the only thing, you know. Yes, you'd see it on here, but at least if it's, you know, if it's not running live, then you have a second to mute it if necessary.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
I mean, just the thought.
The problem, problem we had was, I mean, of course, you know, social media is what it is, but the way some of it was portrayed at, people would have to wait to go see the meeting, and it actually happened, and be able to see exactly what happened, the time, it would have been nice if we could do it live, but it is...
And you can, I mean, you can, it's certainly your choice, you certainly can. So, something to think about, I mean, I, I guess it's gonna depend on, I mean, if we're talking about two more weeks in May, then, you know, it, I mean, I don't even know what the board's thinking. If, if things stay the same, you know, in the CDC, and things stay the same, are we gonna go back to regular meetings in June? Since we can go up to 50? So I guess, you know, that, we can kind of tie the two of those conversations together when you decide what direction you're heading in.
We'll have to watch and see how everything is going, you know, in the world, so. Right now, this is a very safe way of doing it.
Right.
Oh, I didn't have it on.
Let's see, how do you feel about renting the town hall in June and July?
Renting it?
The, the space that you rent out normally for birthday parties, little thing days.
Can we still do that?
Well, I mean, you, you know, you can have, you've got some things, we'll put out both sides. In June and July, we know that you can have 50 people together, so, you know, there will be the stipulation that it has to be 50 in there. You know, less than 50 to meet the governor's orders. You know, the flip side of that is, is you've still got staff going in there, you know, and cleaning. You know, the, you know, how well is it gonna be able to be cleaned? Are we gonna be required to bring somebody else in, you know, above and beyond?
I'm not, I'm not all that excited about it.
We've got road, private roads that want to meet there, have their meetings there, I've gotten a call about a birthday party. They're just trying to book in June and July, and I need some direction.
Yeah.
Could we ask them to clean if they're gonna use our hall when they're done? And I don't mean just pick up, but I mean clean, they would have to, you know.
You could ask.
I don't know, I don't know what anybody feels, feels about that.
Yeah, Dave, what's your thoughts?
I, I kind of think it's a bad idea. I mean, if we, if, you know, like Jen says, the cleaning aspect of it, who's gonna monitor if they actually have, you know, say, you know, say, a birthday party, they have 50 people, 51 shows up, who's kicking who out? Who's gonna, you know, who's gonna make?
That's true.
You know, you know, push the, you know, make sure they don't push the envelope, and then at the end of it, you know, even if we did have them clean, you know, some people's cleaning is a lot different than other people's cleaning, you know? And, and then it would be more burden on us right now, and I just don't think it would look good on our part.
Like, my main concern would be the fact that the girls have to go in after, afterwards, too, you know, everybody that works at the town hall.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's such a great idea right now with everything going on and with everything else being canceled, so.
Maybe revisit it in July or something.
Yeah.
Get through the next two months.
So don't book it for May or June, and we'll talk about it by the end of June?
I wouldn't even book it for July.
Okay, you guys are all on the same page, not June or July at this point?
Dave?
That's fine.
Kim?
Yeah, I'm on the same page.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Um, next I wanted to talk to you about the paving bid. Sorry, I have people trying to, trying to get the meeting, so I'm sending the meeting number if you're wondering what I'm doing. So, the paving bid, the road commissioners reached out to me and wanted to, wanted me to send the last year so they could take a quick look at it. I'm gonna read it to you if I can get it in my email, because it was after we had the packets together. All right, so last year, it said, so sealed bids for paving roads in the town of Acton with hot materials are now being requested. Proposed pricing must be valid through, we put 1231, we put 1231 of 2020 presumably. All paving bids received must be, must include separate prices for per ton laid, handwork per ton, curbing per ton, reclaiming per square foot. Bid shall be submitted in sealed envelopes, the rest is standard. They were fine with last year, so I told them I would bring it back before the board. So, thoughts?
Kim?
I don't see a problem with it, I mean, we did well with it last year. I don't think things have really changed much in the last few years.
Dave?
So when was the end date on the, the bid? When was it supposed to be good for, until when?
December 31st of 2019 is the prior bid.
Okay, so, when Scott and I, we had an issue with that one, one year, because our bid ran out, say January 1st, problem is our fiscal year ran into the next year. So, um, the unfortunate part is if they don't get their paving done this summer, and the, the bid is no good after December 31st, and then they still have June, July, June and July to pave, the bid's no good for those, that point. I, I would suggest that they would do it for our fiscal year, if they can.
So you want me to see if they're open to the bid being good through June 30th of 2021?
Sounds good.
Because theoretically, part of your fiscal year, you're not even, your bid's not even good.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, so it's, assuming they're okay with that, I'm all set to release this in the next couple of days?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
David?
Dave's nodding his head, yes.
Trying to take notes at the same time. Uh, all right, that's it for me for now.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm not, no, it's not. Real quick, so I talked to the superintendent of the transfer station today. He wanted to let you know that he is working on some ideas he has in regards to opening up the recycling. He is whipping on getting some information together that he wants to be able to hand out to the residents and property owners. He's gonna put that together over the next couple of days, we'll pretty it up, and we'll have a draft for you next week. There's some, some minor changes, he mentioned to me glass today, it was one of the changes that, as far as how it's recycled and what we're paying for it. So he's, he's got a list of some minor changes he wants to run by you. So I've asked him to put it together, we'll present it to you next week, and then he'll start probably handing it out next week. But he is also trying to kind of sneak in a little recycling and coming it, you know, coming up with a, a good way socially distancing to, to get that open a little bit, but not allow people inside, so. He's working on it.
Sounds good.
He wanted to, he wanted to call you today, David, I don't know if he did. And Ed, he wanted to reach out to you because of your background, he had a couple of questions about Rawlinsburg. So if you have time, give him a call.
Okay, yep, yep. Some of that is loosening up around the, around the states, so, okay. Anything else? Okay. Warrants and bills, I've been in and signed last night, Kim and Dave?
I did, too.
I'm going in tonight.
Okay, great.
They're not there.
What?
They're not there.
Oh, they're not there?
They're not there?
No.
Well, I guess I won't be signing them tonight.
They're not...
Yep.
I thought they were there when I picked up my packet today, tonight.
No, there's a, there's an appointment to sign there.
Oh, oh, that I didn't see. Okay.
David, tomorrow, the office is open from 3:00 to 7:00, 3:00 to 8:00, so we can grab it for you then.
What's that?
The office is open tomorrow evening, so we'll grab them and put them back out, we should probably just have to do the paperwork piece of it.
Michelle, Michelle, do we all need to sign the appointment?
Well, that's gonna be...
That's the shot.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, I was just trying to find a safe place, because assuming you make a motion a little later, I can't, obviously I can't slide it to you.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's on another business.
Jen, you're fading in and out a little bit, but it's still, you're still audible, so. Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Move a second to approve the agenda, any further discussion? Call for a vote, I'll do a roll call style, Kim, how do you vote?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
You can vote, yes, okay. Minutes of the last meeting, we got February 26, and we have April 29.
I have, I can make a motion to approve the minutes for April 29. I went through those, and those all look good.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, move a second to approve April 29 minutes, any further discussion? Call for a vote, Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
You can vote, yes. Able the other one?
And what was that? Did you say February? What was it?
February 26th.
Six.
Alright, I'll get that done this week.
Okay, table February 26th.
Okay.
Okay. Um, department heads and committee chairs, uh, I know we have one department head. Is that where the chief would like to speak?
Well, Matt, can I before he does?
Sure.
So, I, I mean, Rick is here because, I mean, Rick's really here as a member of the public, and because we've got something under an appointment, I just want to make sure it's clear that we didn't, departments have asked, and I'm not, you know, we're not.
We haven't really opened it up yet, so, okay.
I just want to make sure no one thinks that we're picking Rick out, he just happens to be here, and.
Yep, um.
Sorry, Rick.
Uh. I didn't have anything prepared.
Good.
Good, good.
Good.
Good. Things are good, Fire Department's doing good, everything's doing well, uh, no major changes on the EMA front, everything looks good. Town stand healthy, which is what we want to see.
There we go, that's the best news, so, thank you. Maybe next week, we can, well, next week, we still got it pretty heavy with the warrants, I think. Uh, at some point, we probably should open it up to department heads, committee chairs again, but.
I think we talked about that last week, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we did.
Do you want to ask?
A couple weeks from now.
Do you want to ask?
I would say we put them on as needed, if they have something, yeah, let's do it that way.
If anybody, so we'll send a memo, we'll send an email out to all of them, so if any of them want to speak or have an update, we'll have them reach out, and we'll put so many on a week, based on what else we have going on. Sound okay?
Yep, it sounds good, because, I mean, we haven't heard from anybody in months, so it'd be nice to kind of get back in the swing, so. Okay, old business, we have warrant.
Alright, so Michelle is going to do her magic and share the screen. So as she's doing this, let's just kind of, a couple of things that we want to talk about before we get, um, too far into this. The, the first thing is zoning. Oh, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Alright, so. First of all, I, you know, for anybody, I know that, I'm guessing the public can see this at home, um. This is not by any means a finished document, uh, there, Michelle and I have lots of notes to one another in there, and highlighted sections, so there's nothing, you know what I mean, it's very preliminary. Um, the sections that, at the top, we are waiting for legal as far as whether the preamble has to be, um, changed, because it's all by secret ballot. So we know it's similar to an actual warrant, um, a secret ballot order that you have to sign, so we're working those details out with legal, so highlighted is probably going to change. Um, we do have, so articles five through, I believe, 22 or 23 are all school related, so. Uh, we, the superintendent is aware that we are changing the, we had to change the wording a little bit, so instead of saying to see what sum the town will authorize, we need to put the number actually in the article so that it can be answered as a yes or no. So it's to see if the town will authorize, and we're putting the amount of the school committees request in there, so it's yes or no. So we're not going to go through any of the school warrants tonight, the school articles tonight, because you, you know, in the past, you've never made recommendations on those. I, I don't want to mix up the public comment and, and the zoning, but I, I want to put it together. I have gotten probably four different emails asking you specifically to table zoning until you can have an open town meeting. Before any of those emails even came in, Michelle and I had a conversation, I'm going to say maybe Tuesday or Wednesday. When we started talking about, i- in the past, Acton has been very proactive on their zoning in the sense that we put the entire zoning article on the warrant, and we do that so that in 10 years, somebody can find a town report book, and they don't have to count on an attested copy from, you know, codes or the clerk or somebody, so it's, it's a great idea that, that we do it that way, but when we are switching to a secret ballot, when they sent the zoning questions up, the very first one that Michelle and I opened, I think was five pages, five or six pages. So, when you think about a secret ballot, that, that's huge, so we went directly to code enforcement, um, and, uh, Ken had said he didn't have any concerns with us taking the zoning off. Uh, he would be hopeful, and I was pointing this out, that it would be addressed by the end of the year.
I think that's perfectly good sense.
Okay. David, Kim?
I agree.
I was getting to that.
Oh, sorry. I'll have a sip.
There you go. Yeah, Dave and Kim, you all, you okay with that? So.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, um, I, I believe probably this might work in our favor, given us a reason to have a special town meeting at some point, might bill a bunch of us with something else, but at the end of the day, the zoning, the problem with, with the zoning by doing it the way we're doing it right now is exactly what people are talking about, you know, people got questions about it, they got to have some answers. And, uh, we don't need people voting on something there that they don't know what they're voting on.
Yep.
So, if we have a special town meeting at some point, we're just pumping some other stuff with it, make it worthwhile.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Michelle, can you bring us to page four or five? We're looking to pick up on Article 23, I guess, which is the bottom of the floor.
Page four, it's a.
You say 23?
Yeah, Article 23.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Don't get dizzy.
Alright, so we're not gonna, because you're not making, because we're not making recommendations on them tonight, this is really homework and just going through them, because we're really hoping that, that you can make recommendations next week. 23, other than the year changing, has no change in it whatsoever. So 23 is good. Um, 24 and 25 have no changes. Those are housekeeping from last year. Same thing with, uh, 27, no change. 28, I'm going to have Michelle read you, she has, um, you can see how the numbers jump from 28 to 32, this is Michelle and I combining a couple of articles together, so she's going to read that so we can listen to how it flows.
To see if the town will vote to have real estate and personal property taxes first payment come due on October 15th, 2020, and the second payment on April 15th, 2021. Interest to be charged at 9% on all taxes paid after October 15th and April 15th, and interest on abated taxes to be paid by the town at 5% pursuant to 36 MRSA 506A, and to authorize the tax collector to accept the prepayment of taxes before commitment, before the tax commitment with no interest. So this combined, this is a combination of one, two, three, four articles.
So your due dates, your interest, your prepayments, and your abatement is all in one. Listening to her read it, I'd like to somehow get rid of a couple of those ands, and her and I can kind of sort that out, but these are really all housekeeping articles, all about the collection of taxes. How do you feel about them being combined?
I, I don't have any issue, Kim?
No, I think it sounds, sounds good.
Yep, David?
Love it.
Okay. Just a question for, for us, though, the 9% interest. That's something that we set, I believe?
Uh, no, that, this, well, I mean, we set, the state sets, sets the maximum, and we've always used the maximum. Um, the maximum this year is 9%. Um.
What are we charging this year, Michelle? Is it? Isn't it seven?
It's either nine or eight.
Is it? So they could go lower if they wanted?
They could.
My.
And the, the, the abatement, um, the percentage on the abatement can't be, um, can't be less than, 4% less than what we pay on the penalty.
Can we get down to percentage?
Yeah, so if our maximum is nine, the lowest we can go on, on the abatement part when we pay back is 5%, and we go up to 9% on abatements as well. Um, historically, we've, we've gone with the lowest amount.
And it was not, it was 9% last, this current year, it's 9%.
Yeah.
That we're charging.
My only thought is, and here's just a thought, I don't know how people are going to be as far as trying to get their taxes paid. We, we can't give a break on taxes, it's what it is. Could we adjust that number down a little bit, instead of 9%, drop that some, or is it not worth even thinking about? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
We could certainly change that, but that is part of our budget of revenues.
Okay. Okay, probably just as well.
Yeah, because the problem is, is you have, uh, I know in the past, you have people who own lots and lots of property, who have lots and lots of money. And if the interest, the interest on your, uh, taxes as well, they end up uh, keeping their money in the bank as long as they can, not paying their taxes. So, um, that gives them more reason to do it.
Okay, no, just, just a thought, so, okay.
Alright, so that's that one, uh, 32 is untouched from last year. 33, um, we'll have Michelle read it, 33 is, um, one that we think that can be pulled out altogether until a special town meeting.
Yeah, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds received from the state from snowmobile registration revenue to the local snowmobile clubs for maintaining their snowmobile trails. On condition that those trails are to be open to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge. So our thought on, on tabling this is, we're not getting, those revenues don't come in until January, it's one last question on what will be a lengthy ballot.
I'm fine with it.
I am too, I think it's a good idea, we're going to have to have that special town meeting, so.
Yeah, I believe you will, David?
Yeah, I mean, uh, at the same time, too, I, um, that, that's always been an article question that's made me wonder a little bit. And, um, I like to have the, uh, local snowmobile club give us a list of, uh, trails that they actually take care of.
Good idea, okay.
Remind me in the winter.
Make it out.
Thanks, alright, um, alright, so 35 isn't, is not changed from last year, um, either. You'll see that she's got highlighted down there for information purposes only, um, and, and we're going to kind of skip this conversation because I don't have a, a real clear answer yet, but one of the conversations that, that Michelle and I had, um, in regards to the actual ballot, and the advice we're waiting for from attorneys is what actually has to be put on there, and, or, you know, can we do a supplement book to go along with it? Um, the grayed out area is something that could come off, if we end up having to, you know, putting this whole Article 35 needs to go on there, clearly. Um, but the highlighted section really could come on, because it's just information. We need to hear what exactly we have to have on there, what we can do with supplemental information, and we'll come back to you next week with a recommendation.
Okay. Okay, did you skip 34, or did I miss that?
Uh, no, 34 was the same, yeah, we, I did say something, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, on the subject of 34, since we're there, um, I sat through the FEMA briefing on Tuesday. Uh, we're looking at 90% reimbursement rate on, um, COVID-related expenses. So i- it's important that, that any department that's making those purchases, that, um, that they make sure they let me know that those were COVID-related purchases, because sometimes invoices aren't clear exactly what they are.
Would that be, uh, masks, gowns, um, provided by, base shields?
So it's, it's things that were previously budgeted for, so if the fire department had to purchase extra, um, then they normally would have, then yes, but if it's just their typical purchases, then no. But the, the masks at town hall that we're, we're handing out are, we've never required people to wear masks before, so those are certainly, um.
Okay.
An approved expense, yeah.
Do they have a, uh, minimum we have to meet before we get reimbursed?
$3,300, we've already met it.
Yeah, good to say. About, about that, I think we met that in sanitizer and, uh, masks.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Alright, we good?
Yeah, yep, thanks.
Alright, alright, so 36, 37, um, are, are the same, the years are different there. Uh, 38, these are overdrafts from last year.
Yep.
Michelle, how do those, that's not my dog, I swear.
That was me.
How do those numbers compare, Michelle, the overdrafts? To prior years?
Uh, it's certainly lower than, than last year. Uh, of course, I don't have all of that information here at home, but, um, but yes, it's lower than last year.
And that, I mean, that's a mandated article, so that's got to stay, so.
And well, well within the 15% overage?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Alright, um, 39 is, 39, some of that is grayed out, because again, we're trying to figure out, um, what the ballot question has to say, you know? Can it say, you know, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate X amount for general government for wages, operational costs, and employee benefits, question mark? Or does it, you know, do each one need to be listed out, so that, these are just pending questions we're trying to get answers to.
Okay.
Uh, but those are all, um. Yeah, those are, those are flat line, well, I say they're flat line, but.
General government is, general government is down.
It is?
Yeah.
Good. Too bad we can't put that on the warrant article. Alright, um, 40, we don't, I don't, we didn't include, we didn't, there was nothing to come, we're only going through these really for combination purposes, so. Um, 40 is not much we can do about. Alright, so 41, um, same thing, that's the, that's the fire department. Um, but it's grayed, because we're trying to figure out if we have to separate that on a ballot, so. 42 is the, uh, Michelle, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, uh, based on the, uh, original number that I was given from the chief of a four, a maximum of $400,000 purchase. Um, this takes the, what is currently in the fire department capital vehicle fund, I think is what we call it now. Um, takes that $69,000, puts it towards the 40, uh, towards the 400,000. Gives us a loan of almost 331 for five years. Uh, I talked to the bank on Friday, and she said estimate your high at 4% on the interest, and this would, this would, the $40,000 would be approximately six months in payment, because I, after everything is approved, we have to go out to bid. Uh, there's usually some paperwork time there for the bank and legal, so I'm assuming that the maximum we would have is six months of payments out of this current fiscal year. Um, and attached, legally, we're required to have the finance, financial state statement, um, with any bond issues.
Okay.
And we did take out the word, Ed, based on the conversation that, that we had, um, and, and I know the board is going to meet with the, the fire chief and talk in more detail about this before you vote, but we did take the word new out of there. Now, the word new was in front of tanker, so that if you guys end up talking about spec trucks or whatever direction, you know, you all feel if it's passed is the best direction, you can have that conversation down the road.
Okay.
Alright.
Yep, and that was, that was from a conversation I'd had with the chief at one point in time. Talking about buying either, if there was a good truck that was out there, a spec truck that was already built, or, uh, a demo, something like that, so. You know, maybe used, it may slightly be used, but not, probably not used, but, you know, you know what I'm saying, not, not a, not a custom-built truck, per se, you know, he's, he said that if he finds a good, you know, a good truck out there that suits the bill. Not necessarily a used truck, but you know, you know what I'm trying to say. Just that, to have that.
Like, like a demo.
Yeah.
Like a demo, like.
Yeah, a demo truck, you could have, you know, a couple thousand miles on it, so basically be new, but it was, you know, so, okay. Move on.
Alright. 43 is the safety, there's no increases there, Michelle, is that correct?
There's a slight increase in animal control because of, uh, the pre, the current unbudgeted phone.
Oh, right.
And communications has, uh, uh, dispatch has a little bit of an increase there, but other than that.
No salary increases or anything, alright.
No.
Um, 44, we're just going to skip on right by, we're just going to, and it's not there. So, uh, 44, we're skipping just, just for the public's point, because the Board of Selectmen have a, um, Zoom meeting scheduled for Friday with the road commissioners, uh, right before the COVID hit. We were in the middle of communications with them in regards to continuing to treat them as employees, or switching them over to, uh, independent contractors, so all of these numbers on Article 43. all of these numbers on Article forty-three are gonna depend on what you guys make, what final decision you make, so. Giving that gives you the chance to have that meeting on Friday, if that's okay.
Yep. It's fine.
All right, Article forty-five, the increase here is based on the presentation that you got last week from Michelle. Giving them, what is it, ninety-ish thousand more in paving, Michelle?
It's giving them fifty-one thousand dollars, so, yeah.
A piece, right?
Yes.
How much paving?
It's giving them an additional fifty-one thousand.
Okay, additional fifty-one thousand, so what does that bring the total paving to?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
Yeah.
Or tied.
Are the other lines somewhat flatlined?
The other lines are flatlined.
Forty-six is the transfer station, there's really, I mean, there's nothing to combine that with. Forty-seven is the conservation forestry, and forty-eight is the planning and development. We had talked about combining those two possibly, but decided that they were really different departments and decided not to do that. Cemetery is forty-nine. Fifty. Fifty is your social services, so this one, you guys really wanna have some conversations with, and you, you know, I don't know, know at what point would wanna bring Warren and Finance in on this. So here you will not find the two new ones, we completely removed those altogether. And the two that were, that were not funded last year, which was the main visiting health, uh, main health visiting nurse in the Saco River corridor, we did put last year's amount requested in there. So, and, and none of these other ones are, there is, what was there any increases, Michelle, wasn't there one?
Um, I, I flatlined them all.
Okay, so they, they might have came in with a request, but you brought them down to.
Yes.
So, you know, this, I mean, seventy, you know, you're at seventy-three thousand dollars worth of donation, so that's flatlined from last year, based on what was requested last year, and, and the two new ones, if you, Michelle, I think you told them which organizations they were last, do you remember which ones they were?
The new ones?
Yeah.
Was, uh.
Wasn't that television?
It was, uh, Main Public TV, and the other one was.
Was it a shelter?
Yeah, it's a shelter out of Lewiston, yeah, it was up north somewhere.
But they indicated they had one act and resident, just for clarity, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So the board needs to tell us if you want those two new ones on there, this is just how we presented it, I mean, obviously Michelle and I are not act and resident, so we're just presenting you, you tell us what you want, and then where do these numbers look for you, how do these numbers look to you?
I don't really wanna add any new ones this year, I'd like to just stay with what we've got, and.
David?
Well, yeah, the one you were just talking about, the one in Lewiston, is that what the one you were just talking about, Jen? Yeah, I mean, honestly, we can't be donating all the way across wherever, just because one person, I'm showing, I like to keep it local if possible. At least know where the money's going. I mean, if this is what we had last year, I guess, you know, it looks good to me, I guess.
So main, main health visiting nurses in Saco River corridor, we didn't have last year, correct?
Well, didn't get approved.
Didn't get approved.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Saco River corridor, yeah, I'm not a big fan of that one, but.
How much is it, it's three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
And I think the life flight one was a big contentious thing, but that, that ended up passing, that wasn't that a big deal last year at town meeting.
Yeah, there was a talk about it, but I mean, we typically, typically we use life flight, you know, at least once a year in this town.
Yeah, yeah.
And remember, we've.
That people who don't have insurance.
Insurance, remember, we've combined these, so if you, if you feel like there are some that will have support and some that won't, I mean, you, you know, it's, we've combined them as a recommendation, but you certainly don't have to take that, so, you know, we could break them all out individually, I mean, but you're looking at what, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen? It's like twenty-two more articles.
Yeah.
I mean, you could.
If main health visiting nurses didn't get approved last year, and Saco River didn't get approved, we probably could pull those two out. I mean, it's, it's only thirteen hundred dollars, but thirteen hundred dollars is thirteen hundred.
Right.
I, I agree with that, and I, I also think, is, the finance committee's not gonna get this until we approve this, correct?
Well, yeah, you're gonna tell us what you want on the warrant, and.
Because I think this would be something that, you know, maybe the finance committee could take a hack at too, you know, and see what they thought, I mean, the problem is, I hate to see something on there, have the whole thing voted down because of one line.
Exactly, I agree.
You could, I mean, you could break it up into, you know, you could put your water ones together, you could put your, and, and again, I'm not an act and resident, but I mean, the visiting nurses, I mean, as much as we deal with elderly, I would, you know, that one worries me, but, I mean, we could break it down into two or three articles.
I'm trying, I'm trying to remember why we didn't do the visiting nurses last year, why they got voted down, I guess, I just don't remember.
I think it was redundancy, cornerstone visiting nurses, they were a new request last year, and they, they have serviced quite a few act and residents. And I, I think main visiting nurses, they charge for their services.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe.
I mean, you could take, you know, your visiting nurses, if you're aging, you're, you know, you could put your, like, your act in Chapel Youth Core, your act in Wakefield Watershed, you know, you could group them into two or three, and put them in similar, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and we have, you know, like associations could be, could be a group, so.
But are we trying to keep this thing condensed?
Yeah, but I mean, one of you, whoever said that made the point, I think it was David, that, I mean, you know, you don't wanna take a chance of all of them failing.
Right.
True.
You know, and most people will either, they'll either completely support the water ones, or they won't.
Right.
You know what I mean? Let Michelle and I look at that tomorrow and see kind of what that looks like.
Yeah, because either way, either way you do it, it's kind of dangerous, because if you put all the water ones together, and say, you know, I was looking at the Bolsh Lake Improvement Association, you know, we weren't, through Article forty-three, we weren't even allowed to give them money for doing improvements on the lake, but we're giving them through this, you know, and somebody saw that, oh, wow, I'm, I don't want Bolsh Lake, so that means all the other one is getting screwed too. I don't know, you're almost just as well off, I, I don't believe with the Saco River corridor, if that didn't go through last year, I don't think we should have it on there this year. And what was the other one, visiting nurses?
Main health visiting nurses.
Yeah.
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 Because there are other agencies.
I think I would take both of those off to begin with.
Yeah, and, and well, my suggestion would be roll with what you've got, if it passed last year, I'm assuming that it'll, it'll pass this year.
All right, so we're taking those two off and leaving it as one lump article, or do you want them individual?
I want one lump.
Yeah, leave it one lump, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. Fifty-one is the dams, are there increases there, Michelle?
Um, there's a little increase on the, the annual maintenance. But other than that, no. And that's, that was a proposed budget that I saw from Sanford three or four months ago, I haven't seen anything that's been approved yet.
Yeah, they haven't had a meeting in a while, so.
They don't have to to make decisions.
Yeah, I know, you haven't seen anything from the Shapley side, have you, Jen?
No, nothing, nothing I'm gonna speak about on camera.
No, well, yeah, I mean, nothing, you haven't seen.
It's been interesting, but no, no, we haven't.
Okay.
I, I'd like to see some sort of layout of the annual maintenance and cost, and what it entails. Where our money's going, do we, were we able to get that anyways?
Yeah, we.
Request it.
Yeah, I think it would be something good for the finance committee to have the finger on to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, fifty-two and fifty-three were combined, so, Michelle, why don't you go ahead and read that, see how it sounds?
To see if the town will raise eleven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and appropriate forty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars with thirty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars to come from FY twenty-one franchise fee revenues for operation of the Acton Public Access Television, also known as APAT, and to carry over any unused funds to, should be to Anne, to an APAT Capital Equipment Fund.
So this was two articles, we have one normally that we, we appropriate the funds, the franchise revenue, and then we had the special equipment piece that he needed, remember, he had originally asked for two, we cut one out and left one in. We decided to combine it into two because, you know, you hate, we really don't wanna see the, the channel be passed to continue to run, but not support the equipment, because he's not gonna be able to do that without the equipment. So by putting them together, you know, they either, they either support it or they don't, that's, you know, that'll be their choice, but to keep it running, he's got to be able to upgrade.
Yeah, right.
So that was combined. So number fifty-four, we're up to, okay, so fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six, we never actually combined them, did we, Michelle, we talked about it?
Right, well, the rec was gonna discuss it, Jonathan didn't.
Yeah. So the, so we, we started looking at these last couple, and the rec, like Michelle said, the rec's gonna have them, they're gonna have a meeting, and they're gonna talk about these couple, these couple, but we wanted to get your input on it first, when, when we looked at Article fifty-four, the key words in the second sentence says with fifty, you know, so you're raising X amount, you're appropriating X amount, but then you're expecting fifty-six hundred from anticipated revenues. And that's gonna be soccer and basketball, a big portion of that, so not knowing what that's gonna be, we reached out to Jonathan and just said, you know, how do you feel about raising, you know, raising it? And, how do we word that, Michelle, we were gonna raise it, but we were gonna raise it all, and, but all the funds would go back in, right?
Right.
We're worried that an article will pass saying that they'll have X amount from revenues, and then they won't get the revenues.
Right, because if they can't get together and have, you know, have the, have the games and whatnot, then.
Right.
There's no revenue. Yeah, that's gonna take a little bit of thinking.
Uh, the next one is two thousand dollars added, that's added their improvement for field and parking, and they were gonna take another look at that. Then the fundraising article, so we're gonna, we're gonna encourage them to hold a meeting over the, you know, with it soon, so they can talk about those articles. They have admitted since their chair resigned, so they, you know, they've gotta kind of come together and figure it out, what they wanna do there.
So right now, what we have for numbers right now to appropriate, raise and appropriate, the total, total amount right now, because you got the fifty-six hundred anticipated revenues. If, what, Michelle, with the number that they have, any of this is already set into that twelve, twelve cents?
Twelve oh five, correct.
Twelve oh five, that's already, so you've set that already there, so, at the end of the day, if we go through, and we don't even, I'm just trying to think, if we put it through, it's, it rolls over anyways, or it'll end up going back in the undesigned fund, but we wouldn't wanna have to go back to a special town meeting at some other point if they don't have the funds, correct?
Right, um, I'm just trying to, I've got so many papers here, I'm trying to find out.
If we just put the budget through the way it is right now, and say it gets voted, and it's not gonna affect our tax rate, the money's gonna be appropriated.
Yeah, that fifty-six hundred dollars really isn't gonna touch the tax rate.
So if we raise, right, so if we raise and appropriate the full amount and just take all revenues outside of fundraising, because that's separate, take all revenues, that's not gonna affect the tax rate, that's what you're saying?
Right.
You think that's safe for Michelle, not knowing, because if they don't come up with that fifty-six hundred, that means that they can't spend the twenty-three nine seventy-two, right?
Well, yeah, and, and that would kind of negate Article fifty-six, because the fundraising revenues exceed the budgeted amount, there wouldn't be a budgeted amount, so that would negate that article altogether, so if they fundraised money, then they couldn't spend it.
Okay, I'm wondering what kind of fundraising, you know, if there's really no seasons, you know what I mean? Hopefully, things will change.
If they're not gonna say they don't have a baseball and basketball season, they're not gonna be putting those funds in, they probably don't even need the funds to do it anyways, because they're not gonna be able to do it. So, but I was just trying to think of a way we could word this, this article, so, you know, and condense it to a point where they, they're, just in case, maybe the lift comes up, everything starts going forward, you know, that they have some funds to work with. I'm not sure how we.
Just leave the sentence the way it is, just to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the twenty-three thousand.
Yep.
Right, the twenty-three nine seventy-two, that's essentially the full amount they're looking for, right, Michelle?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Which is actually a little less than this year's budget.
So we could just take the rest of it out, and.
Leave it a flat money budget, yeah.
That way, if they don't get the anticipated revenues, and like Michelle said, whether they get that fifty-six or don't, it's not gonna affect the tax rate, I mean, we, you know. Well, let's ask them, and we'll come back to you.
They, they have to come to us anyways, any, any big expenditures anyway, so it's not like, you know, we won't be looking over it anyways, so, but it'd be nice just to make sure that there is a budget there, just in case.
Okay.
All right, so we'll come back to those three rec ones, anything else on those, Michelle?
Uh, no.
Rec, and then the last one, the last one is the forest management plan, and now, from the committee meeting on Monday, what I thought I heard was that we would be all set to pull this one off?
I would think we could, yes.
Until an open, until a town meeting?
Yeah.
Because this is another one that, A, we have to get through the committee outstanding issues that we have, B, this one's gonna have some conversation to it.
Well, being the liaison to the forest conservation there, what this article is supposed to do is just accept the plan, not to implement, just to accept it. So our forester made the plan up, this is just voting to say, this is a, this is a route we wanna start with.
I think this is to enact, so this would be.
This is to enact, yeah, to, what?
It says enact.
So it would put that forest management plan into place, is, is what it's saying, right, so it would be starting up?
Yeah, so if it said anything about harvesting or anything like that, it would, it would.
We, when we were, when we, when we had the meeting, when we vote, when, when they voted on it, it was to accept the plan, wasn't to enact a plan, because the problem was, what the issue was, was they didn't want to enact on it, meaning go forward with it, actually do the project, until there was some public meetings and this and that, and there was some issues. So we decided to get rid of, you know, to move forward with it and just accept the plan, so I, I guess I'm confused there.
So more of the reason to take it off until the committee can get together and make sure we've got the wording right, the committee chair didn't seem to have any concerns, I can double check, we can ask the whole committee as a whole, but we're gonna save it for an open town meeting?
I'd prefer.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, worst case scenario with the thing, the trees get another year older, you know, it's really not, I don't think there's anything in there that's detrimental to the, you know, to the, what we have.
All right, so just to recap, Michelle and I will make those few changes, we'll deal, the roads is a big thing, gonna be on Friday, I'm gonna reach out to the rec and see if I can get them to have a meeting Monday or Tuesday. Just so they can kind of, you know, maybe by next week, we can, you can start making some recommendations on this.
Yep.
Did I forget anything on, on the warrant, Michelle?
I guess I have a question in regards to Warren Finance Committee recommendations, typically, if, if they don't agree with the article as written, they, they put a lower amount, that, that really would be kind of, wouldn't be beneficial to say, you know, I, that the board, the committee recommends a lesser amount, because the people can't vote on it, so are they, are they being instructed to vote ought not to pass, or approved as written, and not have any. to pass, or approved as written, and not have any adjustments on the recommendations?
That, that probably would be the better way for them to, to do it, because like you say, they can't, you know, if they said, if one of the articles said, you know, a thousand dollars, you know, for whatever it may be, and they recommend five hundred, you can't, you can't vote on the five hundred. The article sits at a, sits at a thousand, so.
Right. And do you, uh...
That's the same problem with the, uh, when we were just back there talking about the, um, services there, the, um, donations, same idea. You know, they can't pull one out and recommend doing this and that, so they really ought not to pass, or, you know, or whatever's, really yes or no. It's a yes or no question at this point.
Yeah. Jen?
Um, I didn't know, it, there's a good point that she made. I wondered if, um, if, I don't know, maybe all of you, but you as the liaison, we've got the Warren and Finance meeting tomorrow night, maybe in the beginning. I don't know if the chair would allow us to have a couple of minutes and just kind of talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. Are you, Jen, are you zooming into that tomorrow night? Okay.
Yep. We'll start it and everything, yep.
Yeah, I will be, so.
And I know the, um, I, I did speak to the, the chair of the Warren Finance yesterday, and, um, he's all set. We'll get him up and going, and, uh, school committee, superintendent, everybody will be there. But it'd be a nice thing to point out in the beginning, if we could.
Right. Yeah.
It's a good idea. And you'll send us the Zoom number tomorrow, right? Because we're on the liaison to the school, I'm gonna be at that meeting too.
Uh, yep, I can send it. It's also on the website. There's a direct link. It should take you right there, but I'll send it to you.
Anything else on the warrant? Nope, there are none. We'll go on to new business. Appointment?
And so I spoke to the fire chief, and he has requested that we make, um, the second one. Deputy Fire Chief, you may recall, he has one, but this would be his second one.
Right.
Can I unmute him? What do you think?
He kind of went in and out, I'm sorry.
I was asking for permission if you wanted him to be unmuted or not.
Oh, yes. Yeah, definitely.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I saw myself unmuted and muted right in like a second, so. Um, so, just quick backstory, I got promoted to chief. I had to fill somebody, move somebody up, so we moved Dave Emmons up, and he replaced me on April, not April, yes, April first, I think. It's all blurring together with this COVID stuff. Uh, Dave Langley was stepping down as deputy chief, got too many things going on, still a member of the department, but didn't want to be in the chief's position anymore. So we went through our regular process, interviews, uh, board interviews, chiefs' interviews, review of the resumes and things like that. And Captain Wayne Ham was the candidate that was selected for the deputy chief's position. So he's been promoted from us internally to deputy chief, which is C two, overseeing fireside equipment, all that stuff, a myriad of things. And so at this point, we need to, uh, come to you guys for the swearing-in part and verification of my promotion.
Okay.
So, and I've got him here, want to ask him any questions. All right, wait, go on, I can't real quick.
How's it going?
Hi, Wayne.
Good. How you doing?
Good, good. I don't have any questions.
We just wanted to see.
Definitely a top priority list.
Okay, um, I assume, Jen, you have a appointment?
Um, I have an appointment. It should, I made copies in all of your folders.
I've got one.
Really?
It's all scribbled all over, though.
It, uh, the words copy are written across it, so that I know where my original is.
Oh, that does say copy. Okay, I didn't read it sideways.
I didn't happen to see that in my folder, so.
All right, David, David, can you read the appointment? Sorry, Ed.
I can almost re, I can almost do it by heart, but go ahead.
I imagine.
Okay, where we start, we start off top.
Yep.
Title, three thirty, A M R S A, two six oh two, Slutman's Office, Municipalities of Acton, Maine, to Wayne Ham, the Slutman of the Municipalities of Acton, do the accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as deputy fire chief within, within and for the municipality of Acton until eleven, one, two thousand twenty-two, given under our hand is sixth day of May, two thousand twenty. Do I have to continue on, or do I go to the bottom?
Oh, that's it.
That's it. Why did we use a date that wasn't consistent with July first?
That's the same date.
They all, the, the, all the chiefs, the chief and the two deputy chiefs are all on the same time, so
Okay.
end of the series.
Good school year.
You would, well, hopefully you guys re-up us. All on the same timeframe. These are, this is my crew, these are my people that I picked, and so we thought it would be best for us to all be together.
That's how the prior one was done, Ed, too.
Okay, that's fine.
I think, I think probably July first. Well, that's not July first.
No, it, David, listen.
Oh, never mind, never mind, wrong date.
Yeah, they're all in.
They go along with the fire chief's appointment.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept Wayne Ham as the deputy chief.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second the.
Moved and seconded to accept Wayne Ham as a deputy fire chief. Any further discussion? Call for a vote? Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Okay, grant letter.
In your packets, um, and in your email, and you don't have to do anything with this tonight, but I think that she's looking for, um, an answer. I sent you an email, on the twenty-ninth of April, this comes from Square Pond Watershed. They're in the process of doing, uh, some projects, in some different phases, and, uh, with some grants in the Acton Chapel area. And she's looking for a letter of support from the town, so I was just hoping that you could read over this and see if it's something that you want to do. Um, if you get into, I'm sure you've already looked at this, but the, the second page talks about the different areas and the phases that, that they're looking at, um, and where Acton ties into it. Um, you know, there's some Goose Pond Road, there's a Tattle Street, there's two or three in, in Acton and Chapel. Um, so if you can read over that packet, we'll put it on for next week and see if it's something you want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. There it is. Yep, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, I brought it today.
Okay, um, which was salt?
Um, so this, I threw on the agenda, because Kim had replied to the email, um, so I wasn't sure. I wanted to make sure that you guys had seen this. Uh, oop, David's gone. Um...
I'm here.
Okay. There you are. So I did send this to you guys on the, on April fifteenth, along with the road commissioners. This was, um, I guess it's a notice, the deadline, of course, is Friday, May eighth, uh, in regards to the winter sand. Um, this is for the state, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the state then, right?
I mean, in the past, we have, we've gone out and done our own separate salt bid, and we have, you know, used their numbers from the, from the Kong big, just to kind of compare. But, um, I wanted to make sure you guys had seen this email.
Because if we, if we, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry about that. I was, I was reading this earlier, and typically, um, well, I thought the call came out a lot later, towards, you know, like, Ju, uh, August, September. Didn't realize this was this early, but, uh, the only thing I, I was reading on this, I didn't realize last time, was, um, it says, um, okay, where if, if you choose to accept a low bid, you are committing to buy at least seventy-five percent of your stated quantity. And which, you know, whenever we, we've gone with our Granite State over the, over the years, because they match the cog every year, um, but they don't make you, you know, bind yourself to having to purchase some certain amount of material. Um, but, I, I don't know, we've always done it, but I mean, we've never actually been bound to anything like that.
Well, I guess the key would be where it says, if you choose to accept the low bid.
Yeah.
So we, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw that, I saw that, too. I don't want to be locked into something that...
Right.
You know, we, we're, if we can get a better price somewhere else. Because that's what, there's, look, at least three places you can get salt from.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And I mean, they're all pretty competitive, but...
Well, the only problem with this is, is doing this as early as it is, it really isn't fair to the other companies that come and bid later, because they're not gonna start putting their bids out, uh, accepting bids for their salt until, you know, like I said, usually, uh, end of July, August, and September.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little early, but, I mean, we could, I guess it wouldn't hurt, we could, we could see what the cog gives us. We don't have to accept it, though, correct?
I, that's kind of the way I read it. You know, you don't have to accept the low bid. So...
So if we at least answered them, then, I mean, we don't have to accept it, so. Just reading that here. So we do have a, you know, they do give us a, um, we'll have two weeks to accept or reject a low bid. So it's something we don't, you know, don't want to do. At least we can reject it, we're not tied into that. I don't know what he's doing with that, because that's what I was wondering when I saw it.
But that, 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 that's what I was just talking about, though. If you have the two weeks to, you know, accept it or not.
And we haven't even gotten anything from anybody else.
Have a clue what the other place is.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe we shouldn't even bother with that. Yeah, yeah.
You got, you got Morton and you got Granite State.
Right.
Yeah.
So, okay. I, I mean, did we do this last year?
No, I didn't tell you we did.
They typically just send us one. They typically just send us a, a quote, usually, because we're part of the cog. I don't understand this at all, because typically, we pay dues in every year to be part of the state programs, and they just automatically send us our cog price. And then what we do is we call and we get prices from Granite State and Morton. And then when we get them, we look at them, we're all at the same as, as the cog. So while we've been doing business with Granite State for, you know, ten years now.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna continue on, but this, yeah, I, I don't like that.
I don't think I'd bother with this.
Yeah, I agree.
David, this is different than the cog.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the cog is, um, Southern Maine Regional Planning, and this is directly through the state.
Okay. I, I, I still, the only thing I don't, I don't like the idea that we're not able to go up to anywhere at all, because we'd be committed here.
Yeah, and it also states, it says, this, this state contract is only for municipalities and counties, does not include Maine D O T amounts. So, yeah, I think it was fixed with the way we're doing it personally.
Yep.
Okay with you, Kim and Dave?
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Public comment ques, section, uh, questions submitted. Jen, what do you have?
So I have two that I'm not gonna bother to read, because they were both in favor, um, in favor of you removing the zoning, and since that's already happened, um, I'm not gonna bother reading those, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um, the next one is a letter that you guys have a copy of. I don't know if, uh, do you want it read aloud?
Yeah, I guess you could. Sure.
If they were at a meeting, it'd be text, it's all out loud, right?
Yep. Yep.
So, Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator, after observing the committee chair meeting, I have a few questions. My takeaway was the reason we need to have a town meeting is to add new spending. Am I correct? And the budget will be reduced and new spending projects inserted, and the budget will remain flat. So, Michelle, you want to answer that piece first? That's a yes, correct?
Uh, well, so the budget itself will not be flat. The tax rate, our preparations are to get the tax rate flat. Um, but there is a, there is a little bit of an increase in the budget. Um, so we haven't, we haven't cut existing budgets. Uh, we've cut any proposed increases to the budget.
How does this election benefit the Acton taxpayer? Has there been any analysis about this cost to benefit? I haven't heard any discussion about the cost mailing, printing, administration, longer time to vote. What is the total cost of a new election? The benefit, I think, the benefit, I think, was money for the fire department and added paving. Couldn't these wait for two months instead of incurring the cost of a special process election in July? If a budget could be reduced, shouldn't we be saving that money for the anticipated revenue shortfall next year? So as far as the, the, the cost of the election, I mean, that's, um, that's a hard number just to come up with. I will tell you, and Michelle talked about the FEMA reimbursement of the ninety percent through the COVID expenses. Um, if we're going to have this ballot counted by one of our DS two hundred machines because of ranked choice voting, um, I am going to have to rent another machine. We cannot use the same machine to count local ballots. Um, that's something that I learned earlier in the week. Um, so it is an expense to, to raise, to, um, to rent the machine. Um, from a Clark standpoint, and this is the direction of the board, uh, which is what you've given me, it's certainly worth it. I mean, it's thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for the rental. Um, Michelle has already said that it's, that's a reimbursable, correct, Michelle? Because it's, we're doing this because of the COVID. Um, but at the end of the day, I just can't have that many questions hand counted, starting at eight o'clock at night, so.
Right.
And ninety percent of that will be reimbursed, too, right?
So the town, the town's total cost would be a hundred and thirty dollars for the rental of the machine.
Uh, but he's asking what the, what the benefit, um, how the election benefits the, the taxpayer, so that's something that...
That's the tax rate.
My, my answer to that would be, it, it makes it so every citizen in the town can easily vote.
Right.
It makes the ballot available to every, every person in town. And there's gonna be a, well, I don't know if there's a savings or not, because there is more work to it, but we're doing it in one day versus a Tuesday full election day, which you're open anyway from eight to eight, and then we reconvene on Saturday. So we're not doing the Saturday part of it. So...
I'm hoping maybe we will get a lot more people that are gonna vote this year.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people don't come to town meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, because it's on Saturday.
Right.
Yep.
It's always nice on town meeting, too. It's summer raining.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
And I, and I knew that the, um, so the concern is that, you know, he's asking if the budget can be reduced, and should we be saving the money? Um, I, he's asking why it can't wait a couple of months. I mean, and I guess it's the...
Don't we have to, don't we have to commit taxes? And we can't commit taxes unless we do this?
You can go, go ahead.
Uh, so, I mean, we have to have a budget to commit taxes. Either, one, we commit based on this current year's budget and leave it alone. Um, or two, we have to have a town meeting to, to move forward with these budget changes. The, uh, the downfall to using this current year's budget is that we also budget revenues. So those budget revenues would have to be part of our tax commitment as well, and those revenues, um, will be too high.
I, um, and, and one, one issue we have is, as we were talking earlier, we were going through the articles, and, uh, we'll use the fire, the fire truck, for instance, okay? Um, the fire truck is gonna take months and months before we actually get this truck here. The, every month that we move this town meeting on and on and on and on, is longer until we get this truck. Plus, if we, if we revert back to last year's budget because of a couple months, which probably won't accomplish a lot, the problem is, the road commissioners are gonna lose out fifty-one thousand dollars apiece on their paving. And if they want to get their paving projects done, they have to know what they're gonna be spending as soon as possible. They can't know in October, then have to worry about rushing in the spring and maybe getting it done. So I think overall, at the end of the day, um, we, we're moving forward with a pretty much, uh, flat rate on our, no increases on the, in the, uh, tax rate, and we, we gotta let these departments do their job.
Okay.
And it goes on to say, are you ready for negative reaction of the voters? Lebanon votes to eliminate the five-man police force. York, one year, had to lay off fourteen people, and a gun quit voters, wouldn't fund the cleanup following the Fourth of July fireworks. And Jefferson, Maine, one year, the fire department and school department budgets were defeated. It was mentioned that we might have a recurrence of the COVID nineteen in the future. We might not. You shouldn't use one... You shouldn't use "what if" for making plans. A Cornell University study results state that 85% of what we worry about never materializes. If it doesn't make sense, if you were just going to talk about what your challenges are without knowing what the numbers look like. We want to make our forecast based on data, not just assumptions. What is the estimated shortfall?
Well, first of all, he's assuming that we can actually have a meeting in two months. We may not even be able to have one in two months. So, um, yeah, they can, they can turn around and they can, they can vote the budget down. The only thing that you're going to lose out of that budget, you're going to lose the fire truck, and you're going to lose $102,000 worth of paving.
Paving.
Everything else revert back, so, so, I mean, I don't know how much more simple we can make this budget than what it is now, but that is really the only thing, and we're taking the zoning off, so that's something there that, you know, we're not trying to cram down the town actus throat. Those are the only two things, and, and then, I think we got the, what, $10,000, I believe, in the APAC.
Yeah, but there's one more, David, if, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I got it on this one, because it's actually, and I confirmed this with legal this afternoon, school budgets are the only ones that are allowed to revert back if a budget fails. What that means is that it will use the clerk's office, if the town clerk's budget fails, then July 1st, that office doesn't open. You do not revert back on municipal budgets.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, we want to make that clear.
And it could also do it right at town meeting, too, you know, same idea.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
This is assumptions, and honestly, I've heard this from members of the, of the warrant finance committee, the, the kickback, the kickback from the, the taxpayers, I haven't heard any kickback. Most of the people of the town of Acton do understand that we are in a situation, we've never been in before, and we're trying to work through this. And, you know, the kickback is, you know, they just don't vote us back in, but we're trying to do the best job we can in the situation we're in. And we, you can go through all kinds of stuff, I can watch three different news shows, they're going to tell us different stuff that's not going to happen in three months from now. We're going from what we're being told right now, what the state's allowing us to do, we're not allowed to have more than 50 people in a room, so right now, this is the only way we can do it, even into August. So, you know, we're already pushing out a month, and then we keep pushing on, we don't know if she, our governor couldn't extend this until October, we don't know. So, this, this right now, I believe, is just getting the foot forward, let the road commissioners do their job, let the, uh, fire truck go on if the taxpayers like it, if not, then we're obviously going to have to go back to the drawing board.
And, and a good point to add to that, and that's well said, David, is that the other thing you're doing is you're taking the legal advice. You pay dues to Maine Municipal every year, and, you know, your treasurer, your town administrator, we've been sending through webinars, we've been listening to, to all of these numbers and this information, and this is their direct advice. This is not, you know, Michelle and Jennifer, or it's not even the selectmen, this is the, the advice of the attorneys are to do not, do not use the current revenues, you know, these are the losses you're going to take, this is how you should handle it. So, this is what they're telling us day to day, and they've got numerous towns that are in the same situation.
I was just going to say, are other towns doing the same thing we are now?
Yeah, and they're telling us, I mean, to consolidate what you can, you know, without confusing the voter, overwhelming them, we're not trying to slide anything in, you know, consolidate what you can that's clear, and take off what you can, you know, take off what articles could wait, that's why the zoning came off the forest, you know, little miscellaneous things.
Yep, no, I think, I think it's the best case scenario, the way we're going. It's nothing that, I mean, six months ago, we didn't anticipate doing this, we were getting ready for town meeting, so, you know.
Michelle, do you want to answer the estimated shortfall, just before I read the last paragraph?
Our estimated shortfall is around $150,000.
It's substantial.
Yeah.
All right, the last paragraph, I know it's not in the benefit of the petitioners of a special project, but I think at the time, at this time, it's the best for the Acton taxpayers, that we don't incur the added work and cost of elections, and this, and stay the course of last year's budget for a few months. We can follow the Maine statute, LD 2167, signed by the governor, 318 of 2020, about how taxes can be committed and dispersed by the treasurer in the emergency of COVID-19. Thank you for considering my thoughts regarding our own bearing.
Michelle, can you clarify that for us?
Yeah, so, I mean, taxes, there, there has been an executive order that will allow the taxes to be committed based on the most recent year's approved budget, but that's what we want to avoid.
Okay.
And in your packet is the, I gave you copies of the executive orders.
Yep.
Go to Maine Municipal, or you just type in state of Maine's executive orders, you can see all of them. But he, he specifically pointed out to us the March 18th and the 2020. The March 18th, just very quickly, if you go down to 1A, there was conversations that, that we had had, you know, why can't, I think we talked about tractor supply. It's not a gathering, they're not calling the gathering, if you look at the second to last sentence, it references large conference rooms and meeting halls.
Yep.
Auditoriums, yep.
So, and then, the April 29th is another one that thought was good to read, that touches more with the face mask, and if social distancing can't be mapped, it touches about the town hall, so.
Right.
Information, good information for you to have.
Yep, I think, I think we're on the right track, I mean, we're trying to do the best for the town that we can do under these circumstances, and.
Based on the advice we're given.
Yeah, yeah, advice given, and also to make this available to as many people in town as we can, so. Like I explained, you know, I used a scenario, Monday night, when we had the, the talk with our committees. If we go into town meeting, and we're still under the 50-person rule, and we get 50 people show up for town meeting, and that's what we have in the auditorium, and someone gets up and goes out to use the restroom, someone new comes in to vote, you can't deny that person to come in to vote. That person comes in, now, you, you know, the person went out, that makes it 49 in the room, new person comes in, there's 50. Person comes back from the restroom, that would be 51. Now, you're denying that person the vote, and it's not what we want to do, it's not what we, any of us want to do, when you can't do it. So, we're not going to deny anybody from voting, so.
And the big thing is, too, is if we're combining this with the school, there's no doubt in my mind, you, by combining this, you're going to have a lot more people, and we're usually pretty close, what, averaging 45?
Yeah, 45.
I'd say more, I'd say we're probably closer, I mean, some of our, if you think about, yeah, if you think about some of the contentious ones that we voted by hand, I mean, they're usually, you know, 35, 38, I mean, they're, I bet we're well over 60 anyways.
Yeah.
We were well over 50 last year.
You'll have 100.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could, you very well have 80 to 90 people at that town meeting, at least for a short period of time.
Yeah.
And there you go, and you're bombing.
Right.
And like I said, we don't, we don't know how long this is going to go for, and we need to move forward with, with business, so.
And that was the point of that executive order, to prove that we couldn't have more than that number, even if they socially distance. That number is just not up for discussion.
Right, right, yeah, okay. Anything else under questions submitted, or?
No, sir.
That's it, okay. Okay, I guess we're down to announcements, there's another Zoom meeting tomorrow night for Warrant Finance, it'll be May 7th, and that's at 6 o'clock. The member for entering that is on the town website, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the Board of Selectmen and the Road Commissioners have a meeting on the 8th, which is Friday, at 6 o'clock. So, that meeting is also.
Is that going to be open to the public, Ed?
Yes, I believe it will be, yeah.
Well, yeah, they have to be open, whether or not you let people speak will be your choice.
Yeah, it's not a, um.
Not executive session, no.
No, not executive session, I don't know even how you'd do one of those on this. Yeah, so, Jennifer, I did have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
And this is probably the difference between Maine and New Hampshire. New Hampshire, there's a statement that must be read prior to doing a Zoom meeting for a meeting of this sort. Is there anything that you know of that we need to be doing with the meetings here in Maine? It's almost, it's almost like, uh, you know, just a, I figure, I don't know what you want to call the, the statement, but just a statement of fact, basically.
A release or something?
Yeah, it's on that idea, it's just, you know, everyone knows that this is how the meeting is done, it's pursuant to different legal numbers. I just want to make sure we're not missing a step at the very beginning of this meeting.
I can certainly, I can double check, and Maine Municipal does have, like I said, that link that they have in the beginning, one, they had one just on how to run Zoom meetings and a bunch of recommendations, I mean, I read their directions and went through it, but, but I'll certainly double check first thing tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm involved with one in New Hampshire where I work, and there is a statement they read before they start any of their meetings, so. I just want to make sure we're not missing a step, that's all, so.
Can I ask, Judy's there, can I ask her if the school board is doing anything, do you mind?
Sure, go right ahead.
Judy.
Yeah, we, we didn't put anything special on there, except to, you know, mention that it was, that it is a Zoom meeting. We just ran it like our regular meeting, we didn't have any special statement. We also got information from MSMA about how to run a Zoom meeting, but, can you hear me?
Yes.
But it didn't give any, it didn't say you had to say anything special at the beginning, it just said, you know, to, to do roll call votes and things like that, so. There was no statement or anything that we read at the beginning of our meeting.
I'll double check, but it'll be just good to have her opinion, because I thought, maybe, you know, if I had missed it, maybe she hadn't.
Yep, appreciate that, thanks, Judy, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. I have nothing else, Kim, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
David?
I don't, I'm good.
Jennifer, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, I guess at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Who does second it, do adjourn, okay, all in favor, Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
I vote yes. Okay, that's it for tonight, thank you, everyone, thanks for everyone that zoomed in on this and, and listened to us, it will be on the website. Or, this is going back on the website, yeah.
On YouTube, yep.
It'll all be on YouTube shortly, so, thank you all, appreciate it, and have a wonderful evening, stay safe.
Thanks a lot.
Bye-bye.